Good evening and welcome to the December eighteen, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd. Vreeman.
Present.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Sol.
Here.
Rowan.
Here.
Shay.
Here.
Schulteis.
Present.
Mayor Box.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by our city manager Keith Van Beek, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
Please pray with me. Thank you, Father, for this day and for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask that you grant this body wisdom tonight as we listen, as we participate in conversation, and take a look at proposals that do this work of the city. Please grant safety to those that serve and also to our community. We know that it is that time of year where there's snow and cold and different types of weather, and we just ask for safety for all in our community. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the agenda and move removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda, and then it will be put in its regular order on the regular agenda. These items are considered to be fairly routine, and they have been reviewed by council as part of our council packet. Before I ask for if anyone would like to have them removed from the consent agenda, Brenda, would you please review those items for us?
Okay. For A, excuse the absence of council member Byrd. For B, approve the minutes of the December four, twenty twenty four, regular enclosed meetings. For C, accept executed oaths of office. For D, the elective renewable energy program rate revision. For E, appointments to the water system advisory council. For F, Everstream GLC Holding Company, LLC pole attachment agreement. For G, non-rate fees and charges update. For H, a resolution to authorize issuance of water supply system revenue bonds, series twenty twenty five A. For I, municipal gas authority of Georgia prepay gas transaction. For J, the Stuckaty Lift Station rehabilitation and capital budget amendment. For K, a claim filed against the city. For L, the September financial reports. For M, the quarterly investment report. For N, adopt a resolution for the schedule of fees and charges for twenty twenty five. For O, the retirement system annual report, Form fifty-five seventy-two. For P, award the fuel delivery services request for proposal. For Q, approve the purchase of furniture for the Collin Park Fire Station. For R, the First Amendment to Option Agreement with Collin Park Housing, LDHALLC. And for S, the South Shore Village Business Improvement District Board of Directors reappointments.
Wonderful, thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the proposed agenda.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan, any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, we'll start with Vreeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to address council not only at our regular meetings but also at our study sessions, and in fact at every one of our board committee and commission meetings. We provide the opportunity for us to for you to be able to speak to us on any subject that you would like to. We do limit your time to five minutes, and we are strict about that. We do have three lights on the dais in front of us. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired. We ask that you come to the podium and please state your name and the municipality in which you live so that we know whether or not you are a resident of the city of Holland. You may speak on any subject that you would like to, but this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to speak to us. We don't answer questions at this time or engage in discussion, but if there's an opportunity for the staff to be able to respond to a question, they may be able to do that after the meeting. If you would like to speak, please come forward and approach the podium. Is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And would you state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. My name is Doug Zylstra. I live at one fifty-two East Twenty-Four Street. I am the county commissioner for the city of Holland. Mr. Mayor and council, I just wanted to stop by and give a few updates of what's currently going on in Ottawa County. Last time I was here, I said that I was hopeful we could get a new county administrator soon through the then-current process, but at the same time expressed some doubts that we could actually get that done. Unfortunately, the latter has come to pass, and with the current lack of any top-tier candidates, we are now likely looking at a relatively long window before we can put in place a new administrator. As you may have heard, our current interim administrator, Ben Wetmore, will be leaving by December thirty-one. Without a deputy administrator in place, the board will need to appoint at least a new interim in the days ahead. It is my hope that we can do this at the most opportune moment possible, whether that's yet this year or in the new year. At our board meeting on December ten, the board agreed to severance agreements for interim administrator Wetmore and administrative assistant Jordan Apperson. I voted no on both agreements because I believe them to be far in excess of a fair and reasonable resolution. There is currently a filing for a temporary restraining order to prevent those payments from going out, mainly based on potential OMA violations from the last board meeting. At this time, is unsure how that filing will be resolved. Regardless, I feel we do need to make better decision for Ottawa County residents who count on us to be good stewards for their tax dollars. At the December ten meeting, we approved a contract with Chester Township and appropriated five hundred and sixty-three thousand from board initiatives funds for the purpose of cleanup of Crackery Lake. I voted no, not because I was not in favor of the cleanup, but because I believe the contract does not allow us sufficient control over our investment. I would have preferred a contract whereby we held the lake restoration funds ourselves and contracted directly with Restorative Lake Services. Likewise, I do not believe investing all our lake restoration funds to attempt to fix one lake, one lake only, when there are many other lake restoration needs, such as Lake Makatawa, throughout the county, to be a fair and responsible allocation of scarce funds. This action is also subject of a temporary restraining order. It is unclear how this item may be resolved. On December ten, the board approved partnership agreements between Ottawa County and Lakeshore Habitat for Humanity, as well as Jubilee Ministries for the total amount of one point five million dollars to support site development and construction costs for housing development. I think we are all, whether at the city or the county level, are grateful to see more affordable housing development. Last point, at December ten meeting, we also approved a request from the Recovery Court for a board initiatives grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is an important investment, as it will backstop our efforts to continue seeking and acquiring state and federal grants to continue the important work that Recovery Court has carried out over the last two decades. I do want to wish you a very Merry Christmas, look forward to seeing you in the new year. As always, residents are welcome to reach out to me at dszylstramayodawa.org or my personal number six one six four four three four two eight one, and I do have a coffee hour this Friday, ten thirty at Barman's. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes. Theo Robert, Holland Township. Good evening to you all. Members of council, Mr. Mayor, about a month ago, I came to the council meeting and I expressed, you know, it was an issue that I had that I wanted you guys to look into, and that issue was very, very important to me. And not only did I bring that to you because I felt that it was in the best interest of the city, but I also created a formal complaint that I submitted to you all in writing. And it has been about a month now, and I have yet to hear from any of you all regarding that complaint. So for me, you know, there's a thing that you say, you know, there's perception and reality. And so for me, I guess my perception is the only thing I have to go on here now, and that is that the perception is that I wrote a formal complaint that was very serious to me. And in that complaint, I also put down my name, my home address, my email, and my phone number. So there were three methods to communicate with me about that complaint. Now, I wasn't looking for you all to investigate that, you know, in a short period of time, but what I wanted at least was a response from you all regarding that complaint. Again, it has been a month now, and I have yet to hear anything from any of you about that complaint. So for me, again, my perception is that because it has been such, you know, a significant amount of time, a month, my perception is that you all aren't taking my complaint seriously, and that is my perception. But the reality is, you guys have not communicated with me on that. And like I said, you know, I always say things should be done in a timely manner. You know, it's been a month, so I would think that, you know, just to reach out to me and just say, hey, we've received your complaint, you know, here are our next steps. Again, I wasn't expecting you all to complete the investigation, but at least show me that you are taking it serious by communicating with me. And again, there were three methods of communication that I left on that complaint. So that's what I'm here, because, I mean, you guys are elected to be the voice and the representative of the city of Holland. And if you guys are the voices and representatives of the city of Holland, then I expect that you guys would at least take a complaint from a member of this community seriously and at least respond to that. So, and again, Mr. Mayor, I understand you said that this is a one-way communication, but I will sit down after I'm done, and if anyone wants to come and talk to me after the meeting and to explain to me, you know, why wasn't there a form of communication, or what is the next step in your process regarding my complaint. All right. Thank you all. And again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, special order of the day, public hearings, planning commission, city master plan amendment. Mr. Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm going to ask senior planner Steve Peterson to come up and make a presentation, and I think if I say anything beyond that, I'll just take what he's going to talk about. So Steve, why don't you just take it away?
Appreciate that.
I'm changing on you.
You did. Thank you, Keith.
Just a few slides to go through here tonight? So the ODC Outdoor Discovery Center has applied for a master plan amendment. This is the property at fifty-six, fifty-one, one hundred and forty-third street. It's a vacant twenty-acre piece of property on the south end of town, and they would like to eventually put a bicycle park here. The property is master planned and zoned industrial. So this is the current master plan map. You can see that property highlighted on the bottom of the screen there. And they really need to go through this process because the park itself isn't permitted in the industrial zone. So without an industrial use, the park use isn't permitted. So we don't allow for a principal park use in the industrial zone. So one of the methods to address this is really to rezone the property to the open space district. In order to really justify rezoning it, we wanted them to go through the master plan amendment process first. So as I mentioned, this is the current master plan map showing you as the property in that industrial land use. So this is what the proposed master plan map would look like. So you can see I drew that little green dot there. So the idea is that the property would be master planned, the designation would be that recreational park designation. That really sets it up for the ability for it to be rezoned to the zoning district of open spaces, which is basically where we put our parks. So you can kind of get a sense from this map here that we really don't have any recreational park master plan designation on sort of the south end of town. My quick view was it's about two miles to the north is our nearest park. Now, I know you do see that other sort of green spot just a little bit to the east of the airport, a little bit further north of where we're talking about. That's in a little bit different category. That's our cemetery and preserves category. So sort of a wetland nature preserve type of designation. So it's a little bit different than the recreational park, which is more of the idea of it being an active park use. So that's a little bit, just a quick background. Again, this, the rezoning will come in front of you at a later time, but what you have in front of you tonight is really the first step in that process, the master plan amendment. Planning Commission has recommended unanimously that you adopt this new master plan map, and you have a resolution in your packet that they're asking you to approve tonight. So again, the recommendation is to amend the master plan map to the map that you see on the screen here. Just a couple quick items that I wanted to point out. This is the, some of the goals or action steps in our current master plan map, and there is a couple things that we think it ties into nicely with their request. Probably the most notable was the action step that ensuring that there are recreational opportunities for all city residents. So again, sort of the idea of providing that park use on that south end of town, we thought really tied in nicely with that action step from the master plan.
That's all I have for you.
All right. Questions, Mr. Corbin?
Looking at this, is this landlocked from the industrial property that's around it to the north of it? I mean, how would one get access to the property itself?
Can you use your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. How would one get access to the property? Looks like it...
You got to turn it on there, Scott.
Turn it on, sorry. First day, yeah. So anyways, looking at the industrial wraps around it to the north there, so is that, is there a way to access that property by discovery if they were to use that for that purpose?
So the piece that the Outdoor Discovery Center has, has frontage on one hundred and forty-third street. You're talking about the piece to the north of it?
Yeah, so the piece that we're looking at currently, that bright green.
Yep.
Which is being proposed, right?
Yep.
Just to the north of it, it shows it industrial.
Yes, you're right. There is, there is some more property to the north, yep.
So it's completely wrapped. So what about access? I'm trying to figure out access to that property. Okay.
That's just the interstate. It's not showing the actual road.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Sorry, yeah. Maybe...
There we go, got it.
Maybe that one's a little bit better.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's about twenty acres on one hundred and forty-third street.
You'd think I'd know that with that being my ward, right? Maybe I shouldn't have turned my mic on.
Mr. Van Beek?
I think it's important to, Steve noted in your action request form, of different ways to possibly get this owned. And one of the things that we're certainly sensitive to, and actually think that this actually preserves, is the preservation of industrial property throughout the city, and that actually taking this proposed approach through the master plan map amendment actually does also protect that goal of city council and our strategic plan to recognize and the importance of industrial property in the city. So I just wanted to note that also, where that might be counterintuitive here, but I think it's explained in the action request form, and I'm sure Steve could answer more questions on that also.
Mr. Shay?
Steve, do you know if this property is impacted by the, by any height restrictions from the airport overlay?
So I did put a slide for the zoning map in here. So you can see there is, it just barely nicks sort of the northeast corner of this piece of property. So my answer is, you know, not really, but there is, there is a small piece of it. Now, where we've seen other properties that have this same sort of dilemma, really, then they end up putting maybe their parking or their stormwater issues on a little piece of that. So the rest of the piece of property is still able to do all of the things that you would normally have. So not really, it's just a very small sliver that is impacted by the airport's overlay.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Oh, great. Thank you, Steve. This does call for a public hearing, so I will open that public hearing at this time. Is there any member of the public who would like to address council in regard to this particular issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion?
I just have, I just got to have a comment. I think that this is actually a fantastic idea. I appreciate Outdoor Discovery Center's creative use of this property and the idea of making sure that we've got some park space on the south end of town, especially in Mr. Corbin's ward, so that the folks that are down in the fifth ward in the south area of town have an opportunity to be able to get some recreational space down there. And the idea of kids and bikes working together in that area, I think, is an absolutely fantastic idea. Any other discussion on this, on this item? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please
call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for the public to address us in person during our council meetings, we do also have an email address where they can provide written communications to us. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We collect those in between our regular meetings, and if we have them, we accept them into the record at this time. We do not read them out loud, but accept them into the record. We don't have them, any of them this week, but we like to make sure that people know that that email address exists. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com if you'd like to send an email to city council. Next item on the agenda, item twelve, Echo four-point-one financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am going to take the opportunity to make a few comments and introduce both Paul here in a second and Lynn also, I'm sure, will have some comments. But I do want to take a chance, for those of you that have sat here and remember this, this is one of those times where I always like to remind council, but also the community, that quite frankly, this is one of the most important roles that council has in oversight capacity. And unfortunately, I'm familiar in my career of some examples, and quite often we hear of bad examples, not great examples, right, of communities that had an audit done annually, but did not, quite frankly, bring attention to it or really take the important step that you all are taking tonight. But I'm also going to point to and maybe ask other comments about the multiple steps in the structure that we have, where both at the Holland Board of Public Works in a subcommittee meeting, and then a subcommittee meeting just with our auditor and the council members without staff, but then repeated again at the council level, the same thing, an audit committee meeting, ask staff to leave, and then have this public presentation, which probably at the end seems really like the executive summary of the executive summary of the executive summary. But the oversight of the financial audit is critical, because I've heard too many stories and could repeat those if ever asked, of communities that, again, were going broke slowly but surely, but it never really dawned on anyone until at one point they couldn't provide services, or they, you know, couldn't continue to fix roads or different things like that. And I think we have a very good structure in place where we take this seriously, and I thank you in advance for taking this seriously. Huge thank you then to the audit team, but certainly our staff, both at the city and the Holland Board of Public Works. And in particular, just added awards, it seems like, in the process that we do, and Lynn will talk about our PAFR, and she'll give you the acronym. I know it, but, you know, then you can, you know, it's a cliffhanger to find out what a PAFR is. But just tremendous work, and thank you that we take the time to really go through this, even though it might seem routine. This is really important stuff. And also, I think it points to a goal that you've all had that I'm going to encourage us to even more lean into moving forward, which is stability in a lot of different areas, but particularly financial stability. And I think what you're going to see in this is that local governments, you know, we don't have the luxury of not passing balanced budgets, right? We pass balanced budgets, we do long-term analysis, and we're always taking a look at and planning forward for those types of things. And when there's uncertainty, we, as best we can, plan for that uncertainty and make sure we take hedges and protections against that uncertainty, but we certainly live within our means. So I just wanted to take a little bit of extended time and maybe bring to attention how important this process is. Thank all the teams for their work on this, and also thank again, once again, all of you for taking this seriously, because it's important stuff. So with that, I think I'm going to hand it off first to Lynn. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Yes, tonight, we're going to present the financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. As a reminder, our fiscal year ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and we are required by law to have an audit by an independent auditing firm each year. And Raymond Robson is our auditors, and in a minute, I'm going to hand it over to Paul Matts with Raymond Robson. He's going to walk you through the two-hundred-plus-page audit report, which is great. And then I will come back after he goes and just talk about what this PAFR is, just real quick. But I do want to acknowledge you, just based on what, follow up with what Keith said, it was a challenging year because we did have a new financial software system, but the auditors really worked with us. We had the new financial system. We changed to the chart of accounts that's in compliance with the Michigan requirements, and we cleaned up some funds. So it was a fun year. And so we were glad that the auditors were patient with us. So anyway, we, I will turn it over now for Paul to walk you through that and then be back in a minute. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm sure it feels like Christmas came a little bit early this year because you've got an auditor in the room, right? So we did have the opportunity to meet earlier this afternoon with the audit committee, spent some really good time with them, walking through the financial statements and the audit results in a little bit more detail. We did have a chance to meet also without management present, and it just had a really good conversation, and was able to share a lot of good, high-level information from the auditor. and was able to share a lot of good, high-level information from the audit this year. We do appreciate, continue to appreciate the outstanding support and cooperation that we receive from everyone we work with at the city, at the Board of Public Works as well. In addition, you know, to all of the things that Lynn mentioned that took place during the year, you know, the audit is a huge time-consuming lift and that's on top of, you know, all of the other day-to-day responsibilities. So just continue to appreciate the support, the cooperation, the partnership as part of the audit process. So I'm going to share a few high-level comments, results for the audit during the year and then I'd be happy, of course, to answer any questions that anyone may have as well. So as you can see on the slide here, maybe first and foremost to share with you is our responsibility as part of the audit is to ultimately issue an opinion on the financial statements and whether we believe those to be accurately stated financial statements in all material respects. And we have issued what's called an unmodified audit opinion. That is the clean audit opinion, which is what you want to achieve during the audit process, that yes, we believe these are accurately stated financial statements, should be useful for, you know, this group as part of your decision-making processes. So as part of the audit as well, if we have any matters that we want to report, audit findings, audit recommendations, those are included within the reporting we do as well. We have one matter that we wanted to communicate this year that really focused more on the Holland Board of Public Works audit procedures that we were doing more so than, you know, with the team here at the city. And that was just regarding timely reconciliations of accounts. As I'm sure you all know, the BPW is a large, complex organization. There's a lot going on on the accounting side. The audit process just moved along a little bit more slowly this year than maybe what it has in years past. So we've had some really good conversations with their audit committee and management about plans for next year, ideas for next year to hopefully sort of move that audit process, get those reconciliations completed on a little bit more timely basis. So we've appreciated, you know, the support, the conversations regarding that recommendation. Few areas of interest in the financial statements, again, I think we're up to 263 pages this year. They seem to grow by a handful of pages every year, but a few pages that I wanted to call out specifically, the transmittal letter you'll find early on in the financial statements. That document provides some summarized financial results for the year, but it also talks a lot about the accomplishments, what was done with the use of the funds during the year. So it goes beyond the numbers a little bit and sort of puts some perspective behind the financial results for the year. As I mentioned, regarding our opinion, that is included in that independent auditor's report. And again, that was the clean audit opinion that you want to achieve during the audit. And then the management's discussion and analysis as well, that's again, a few pages that provide a high-level summary of the results for the year. There's a lot of good narrative information in there about budget to actual results and current to prior year changes. Management does a great job with some narrative and analysis in there. So always encourage, if you don't want to fall asleep with the 263-page report, this is a good, you know, handful of pages that, that I really would encourage you to, to read and reflect on the year. You could see here for the general fund, where it ended up its fund balance for the year. I always, as I'm, as I'm looking at these slides, I always remind myself that next year I want to make them just a little bit larger so that I can read them a little bit easier. So I'm going to, I'm going to pull it up on my screen here as well. So for the general fund at the end of the year, there was a total increase in fund balance of about $3,061,000. To bring the end of the year total fund balance to $16,282,629. What is important to point out, as you can see, a portion of that is in, sort of set aside for budget stabilization. About $2,137,000 of that is in the budget stabilization fund. But for financial reporting purposes, it's just required to all be included within that general fund column. There's a couple of numbers here as far as the general fund's fund balance as a percentage of the total expenditures in transfers out. I included, you know, numbers based on either including or not including the budget stabilization fund. But sort of the main takeaway is, you know, if, if you include the budget stabilization fund, there is about six months of expenditures in your ending fund balance for the general fund. And lastly, you know, we've talked the last couple of years about the funding that the city received, the ARPA-related funding. You can see that, you know, the amount that was not spent at June 30, I think those, those dollar amounts were actually, should be flipped on that slide. The under-earned revenue is that 400, nearly $500,000 at the end of this fiscal year. Most of those funds have been spent over the course of the fiscal year. There's just a small amount remaining that will be spent over the next couple of months if they haven't been already spent at this point. And then finally, I wanted to share a little bit of information also on the net pension liability of the city. This is a number where, you know, I like to touch on a little bit every year. There is a lot of good information in the financial statements, specifically in a section called the Required Supplementary Information that provides 10 years of trend information on this net pension liability. So if you're curious to see where it's been over the last couple of, couple of years. But at the end of 2024, the net pension liability was about $30.2 million at the end of the year. Down a little bit from the prior year, but keep in mind that as, as I've noted, a, a big chunk of that relates to specifically to the Holland Board of Public Works funds as well. And I think with that, those are the, you know, summary highlights I wanted to share. Again, the audit went very well from our perspective this year and if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Questions from council? Great. Wonderful. You did such a great job. They don't have any questions for you.
Nobody's, I didn't see anybody nod away, so that was a good sign.
Thank you, Paul, for that summary of the 269-page report. So as an ex-auditor, I really do like reading the whole audit report and have all my notes already on my draft copies, ticking and tying and everything out. But I realize not everybody likes to read that. So, but it's important. We feel it's important that every, all of our stakeholders understand how the city finances work and what we're looking like each year. So you might recall a few years ago, we started the mini version of our reports. So for the audit side of it, it's called a Popular Annual Financial Report or PAFR. So once again, we have a 15-page summary of the 269-page report and lots of pictures, lots of colors. We take the financial information and kind of put some graphical comments, you know, some wording comments and some graphics to kind of help illustrate what it means to other people. So we're going to have this posted on the website really soon and it was included in the packet. So kudos to my staff. They did a really good job on all of this. We didn't pay anybody to do this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, but otherwise enjoy reading it. And for those who are viewing from home, it'll be on the website soon.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. Any, any questions for Lynn? Yeah, Tim.
Previously, I think, I think it's probably, if not Keith, we even talked a little bit about the responsiveness for the HPW and timeliness and response and things like, was that received well? Is it? I don't know. You know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. It, similar to the process that we're doing, the same process happened first at the BPW. So there was conversation and as Paul indicated, some great conversations about opportunities for improvement and what does that look like and exchange of information. So I think all parties are very comfortable moving forward and, and that everything will be taken care of. And again, it wasn't a substantive, like, oh, there's, there's something, you know, that's, that didn't still qualify in a clean opinion. It's just continuous improvement.
Yeah. And Tim, I think I can address that as well. Kim and I are both on the audit committee for city council and we talked with our counterparts on the BPW board about that same issue. And I know I've got a, a high level of confidence in their ability to, to keep an eye on that. And, and I think that they feel like they've got that well in hand as well. So, yeah. Any other questions? Yeah.
Just a comment. I just wanted to say, I know this was a really heavy lift this year with all of the transitioning to your, to the new platform for financial and then helping out other agencies, you know, of our city government. And I always appreciate the quickie report. But moreover, it lends to just a feeling of stability and transparency in how we conduct our financial affairs in the city. And so I just want to thank you for that, for always bringing forward all of the information, whether it's positive, negative, looking around the corner, all of those things. You make it look easy and I just wanted to say this year in particular, I know it was a lot of work. So thanks for, to you and to the audit team for your fine work on creating, you know, the documents, getting everything cleaned up, getting everything prepped for next year. Nice work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council members? Great. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 12, Echo 4.1?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rowan. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman. Any discussion? I, I just have a couple of comments as well. As Mr. Van Beek said, this is one of the most important things that we do. Kind of puts a bow on the end of the financial year. We're going to be starting a new financial year. This is the end of 2020, fiscal 2024. We're going to be starting fiscal 2026 coming up in January. So we're 18 months into a, into a process. And while this doesn't necessarily show what our financial health is, this shows that the numbers that we use to make our decisions are actually accurate numbers. That the numbers that we make our decisions by, we can actually count on the fact that those numbers are accurate. And I absolutely love the PAFR. I love taking a look at that because I have always been a words guy, not a numbers guy, and I somehow found myself on the audit committee, having to take a look at a lot of numbers. And Lynn and your team and Paul have made it very easy for this words guy to figure out the numbers and be very confident in the numbers that we are taking a look at. And as Lynn, I said to you at the meeting, I am incredibly excited to share the PAFR with the public. One of the favorite things I have, favorite things I get to do in my job is share the financial position of this community with the public. Not only what it is that we're doing, but how it is that we're doing that. And the fact that we can be incredibly transparent and have an easy way to be able to share with them, the, the information that you make it very easy for us to share. Matter of fact, this afternoon, I was trying to figure out an easy way to post the PAFR on social media and get it out there in front of people to be able to say, hey, take a look about the fact that every single year that I've been mayor, our financial position has gotten better every year. Every single year that I've been mayor, we have spent less money than we have taken in. Every single year that I've been mayor, our, our general fund budget, or I'm sorry, what's the, what's the number for, or what's the name for the thing that, the money that we have left over in our reserve? I'm a words guy, not a numbers guy. Our fund balance has gotten bigger every single year. I was excited to see that our fund balance grew by $3 million this year. This is an incredible organization that we have and you guys make it incredibly easy for the nine of us to be able to make smart decisions, as, as Kim said, to be able to look around corners. And what the public doesn't get to see is the amount of hours that we spend in study sessions with you guys drilling information into our brains about what may be coming in five years, in 10 years, in 15 years, that we have to be concerned about, about what the financial picture of this city might be like, about what we need to be concerned about, about what we need to be worried about, so that we can make smart decisions because we would not be able to make smart decisions if you guys were not helping us do that. And on top of that, you make it incredibly easy for us to share that information with the community and brag to the community about how amazing this place is and what amazing work you guys do. And you make it colorful and you make it fun and you make it easy and interesting for them to see. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for making it exciting for this words guy to be on the audit committee. I was actually excited to go to the audit committee meeting today because I knew that I was going to be getting incredibly, incredible information about what a great place this is, what a wonderful place this is to be able to work and how proud I am to be the mayor of this incredible community. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, Echo 4.2 City Budget Fiscal Year 2025 Midyear Amendments. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Lynn's going to come up here a second too, but really almost to, to transition and, and carry on a theme here. This probably would be something that Lynn will explain that we do budget amendments periodically. And this could have been something on consent agenda because in its own way, there's probably nothing too much to see here. But we think again, this is important to particularly immediately following the audit, to talk about how things are going and demonstrate that transparency and also to point to the great systems that Lynn has brought and added to our city with long-term financial forecasts and making sure that we're staying on top of things and that we're passing on good information and not just, not making amendments as we go through a given fiscal year. As we said, we just, Mayor did a great job. We, this closed in a final way. The reporting on FY '24, we're in the middle of FY '25 and we're doing amendments. And in a moment, I'm going to tell you that actually, at least for staff, the process for FY '26 is already started. So I guess it just fits. So with that, Lynn, why don't you take it away and, and talk about the budget amendments?
Thank you. Yes, now we're in fiscal year '25. So the, as you might recall, we, we developed this budget back in February and March and April of the year before it's adopted in May. And so now we're starting into the year and it's December. So we've had the benefit of some of those estimates that we originally made. We know now, we have more information and that's really what the mid-year budget amendment's about. And the timing is designed that as we start into fiscal year '26 budget that we're going to work on, we want to make sure we have the fiscal year '25 aligned with where we are currently seeing it coming in at. So included in the packet was not only the general fund, but a few other funds. And most of them were related to just better estimates on certain items and nothing unusual or significant. But I do always like to highlight the general fund budget because it is our main operating fund for the city. So I do want to go over just briefly some of the major changes. And I'll begin with the revenue side. This year, we actually are budgeting revenues to decline overall in the general fund by $52,500. And really what's leading that is our building permit fees and that is projected to go down by $454,000. And that's really related to the timing of some of our large projects that were initially thought to have materialized in this year. Just due to timing, we know things, projects don't always go on the schedule that they originally intended. So those fees will not, most likely not occur in fiscal year '25. So they will, we're amending that down so that we don't, so that we're getting to a realistic budget. We also had a slight modification of the state revenue sharing. You may recall that we get a portion of the sales and use tax that the state shares with locals and they're responsible for the projections and we base it on their projections. So they have actually updated their projections, you know, to see some of the things they're seeing in the economy with regards to sales and use tax. So that is coming down about $75,300. So that is coming down about $75,300 as well. And finally, the, uh, personal property tax, which we've, uh, mentioned numerous times, is just a very elusive, um, revenue source to try to budget. So we do the best we can. We based it on, um, what we had received last year. But we get our first initial payment in October 2024. And it was less than we had thought. It was less than last year. And so that has been reduced by 67,200. I will share that we are still very conservative in our, um, estimate of the revenue because we get another payment in May. And that payment we are super conservative on. So I feel like we will end up coming in, uh, over budget on this by the time we get to that point. But again, we don't want to be, we want to be conservative in this because it is subject to something that the state provides to, to the locals. So now we've seen that that's much more than the decline of 52,000. So we had some offsets. So on a positive note, we've had, uh, we've been able to, um, increase our investment income. So as you know, rates continue to be high, especially in the lower end of the yield curve. And we have a lot of, uh, our funds in more liquid, um, investments. And so we've done quite well. And we initially budgeted it that very conservatively. But we are taking that up by 380,000 and we, I still feel that's a conservative number. Um, especially because we, on the investment side of things, we take a portion of our long, uh, of our investments and ladder them. So we try to minimize the impact of, um, investment, uh, yield changes. So I think we're okay in that one. And then finally, we had, this one's an accounting issue, so it's a little trickier to explain. But we typically had budget and we'll see something about it, um, on the expenditure side in a moment. But as you may be aware, probably are aware, the, um, city has received some opioid settlement, uh, proceeds. And so we have had that balance accumulate for a couple of years. And so we now have enough money to be able to use that. And we have eligible uses our, our WEMET and our CIT officers' wages. So we are budgeting to have some of that funds reimbursed, some of the funds. Um, and some of that's going to show up as a revenue. And you'll see in a minute, some of it's just a reduction of a, a contingency item. So overall, uh, we are down just 52,500, which is, is still, uh, a, a good position to be. So moving to the expenditure side, um, here the expenditures, a lot of expenditures are, are very small adjustments, uh, related to, again, maybe they didn't know they were going to have something or they overestimated. Now they got a, a better idea on what it's going to cost. But there are a couple of items I did want to highlight. And one of them is kind of what we talked about. So each year we, um, participate in a WEMET program and we get some funding from a grant. So we, uh, end up, we never know quite what we're going to get. So we put it in contingency how much we're going to have to transfer to the WEMET. And basically what we'd ha- have to use general fund expenses for would be the non, a portion of the, of their wages, like the amount we didn't get the grant for. So this year, as I just mentioned, we don't need to transfer those funds from the general fund because we now can use that opioid revenue. Now, we, we will be very, um, we're, we're very aware this is more like a one-time or two-time because the, um, it's not going to be every year. So when we get to budgeting in fiscal year '26, we'll be very mindful of that. That it's more like a one-time, not really one-time, but a smaller amount in subsequent years. So finally, the last, um, thing I wanted to highlight is we always have a contingency for what our renewals will be regarding health and dental insurance because we have to budget again back in February, March, and we don't really know what's going to happen. So you saw the renewal come through in the fall. And the renewal, we had about just a little less than 9% increase. So, um, we had typically budgeted at 6%. We've had some really good years in the past. So we had a contingency though, for any additional. And so we released our contingency and we actually still came out positive because our, we had contingency for that and then for the results of the, the, um, employee wage study, which ended up really, we had more contingency than we needed, which is good. So overall, we, um, decreased the expenditure in the general funds by 181,900. So that resulted in a net, so really net, we actually saw revenues and XX of expenditures increased by 129,000 because we decreased our expenditures more than we did revenues. So that's a good thing still. And I, um, can tell you, we still, I still feel like our budget's in a very conservative position. So we always like to see, just like we saw just the audit wrap up, we like to see, well, where is our projected ending fund balance? Because we want to make sure we're still tracking. Because again, why is it important, while this might seem like we're at the higher end of our range, we know, because we do long-term financial planning, that we've got a couple tough budget years coming up because of different things. So, um, I still feel like we're, it would still project to be 48.7% of expenditures, which puts us in a good position as we know the next two years for sure are going to be some challenging years. So with that, I would be happy to talk about any of the information that was included in the detail or answer any questions about this.
Yep. Questions from, questions for staff? Nope. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 12 ECHO 4.2?
Move to approve the mid-year amendments presented.
Moved by Vreman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, item 13, Communications from the City Manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And I will warn you tonight, I do have a handful of things. So, uh, I know sometimes we get to joke about how many, how many I have, not directed at anyone, Kim. But, uh, so first of all, schedule items for you, but also for the community, just so you know. Um, this is the last meeting in 2024 for you all. Um, so, um, thanks for another great year. Um, and we've used the word stability a lot tonight. I think this was another year of stability. And I think the community owes that to you and your leadership. Um, so thank you. January 8th is the next council meeting. And you'll know that that also is the first of two Coffee with Council events. That's definitely has been and will continue to be advertised by city staff. So you can know about that and also citizens can know about that. 8th for one hour before your council meeting here and then that on the 11th in this, on Saturday morning at the Holland Civic Center place. Um, I did reference that, uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, we are already working on fiscal year 2026 because I can let you know that, uh, department heads are already shooting their budget videos. Um, and for many of you, you recall, and for anyone interested in the public, you can go on, um, manager or finance page or just search on our website, budget videos. Uh, that's become kind of a tradition. And I think it's an improvement in our process again, where each department, um, gives a perspective on past year, but then also perspective on what they see coming and priorities. That then becomes part of your discussion, um, when you take a look at setting priorities for fiscal year 2026. So those videos are already being shot. Um, and tho- those videos will be showed to you at a study session on January 22, uh, which then leads into the council retreat that Saturday on the 25th. Finance, um, a lot of financial discussions tonight, right? And kind of the, that was the theme of the evening. And expect that to continue into calendar year 2025 and fiscal year 2026. I'll let you know that we're going to continue to focus on stability. And you've seen things like a transparent audit tonight and talked about long-term financial forecasts, which we went through a study session. Um, doing budget amendments. There is no shortage, as I look across at Assistant City Manager Matt Van Deikin, who still has a long list of big projects that he's managing on his board that are not complete. Um, and yet we're planning for uncertainty. There's certainly uncertainty in, in other governmental systems higher than us right now. And even as Lynn mentioned that in our budget amendments, that has impacts on us. And best we can, we're making sure that we're planning for that uncertainty. So that the services that people rely on us upon, um, will not be, um, unrealistically endangered by anything, uh, that might happen. Um, and I'll just point out, even on your consent agenda tonight, we lowered the elective renewable energy rate. Um, so not only are we planning for renewable energy, but you can participate that at half the cost that it used to be. Um, you approved a prepay of gas transaction, which basically again means that the electricity that we all, um, enjoy is cheaper yet still because we're, have a BPW that's working the margins in that area. We're taking a look at fee book updates, both on the Board of Public Work side, but also the city side to, I think, very much appropriately try to reflect that there are some services that, um, are more, I'll say, transactional in nature, um, that then there is full or at least partial cost reimbursement through those things. Um, great investment report, um, several RFPs and bids. Again, taking a look at making sure that we're using the right processes, getting the right product, um, from the right people, um, at the best cost. So you can be assured, led by Lynn, but, um, really DNA throughout the organization that will continue to have that focus on financial stability. And speaking of challenges to stability, uh, it's been an interesting several weeks of legislation. I've personally been to Lansing a handful of times and had no shortage of communications, um, in different ways with MML, Michigan Municipal League staff, but also, um, representatives both locally that represent us, but others. And, um, we're still, you know, working on different things. One in particular that you may be aware of, that we talked about revenue sharing. Um, I hate that terminology because it sounds so noble that another group is sharing revenue back with us when the reality of the history of that is that we were stripped from local revenue that used to be generated and stay in our community. And it basically took a right-hand turn and went to another, um, city, um, that happens to be our capital. And then they turn around and they keep large portions of it and then turn around and say, if we give some of it back to you, you're, we're sharing with you. And I, I never miss a chance to just remind everybody, that's not revenue sharing. Um, it's basically, um, a long history of funds that we were able to use to provide services with that we have to fight for all the time. And there's a piece of legislation that we've been looking for, for a long time, called the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, which would be one more element that would make it more difficult, uh, to take and keep a larger chunk of that somewhere else instead of returning it to us. So far, we're still fighting for that. It doesn't look good that that's going to get done before lame duck. Um, so the last thing I'll say is that, um, you will see in my Friday communications, but also you'll see more that one way that you can participate and learn more about that is that the Michigan Municipal League has what's, um, for a couple of years now, they've renamed CAPCon, Capital Conference, and it's the Legislative Conference. And this year, that's going to be on March 18th and 19th. Typically, it's like, uh, starts in the afternoon on the 18th. Stay overnight, um, have some opportunities to interact with legislators, um, have a breakfast, um, spend pretty much a full day, but that 19th is a Wednesday. So we always kind of scramble back and get back here for council meeting that night. So anyone that has an interest in that, um, contact Mallory. Um, registration materials are available and of course she'll take care of and make that really easy for you if you have that ability to go on March 18th and 19th because these, um, topics do matter here locally. Um, and with that, I think I've talked enough and I will, um, cede my time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Uh, next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I have a number of appointments this evening. Uh, I would ask that the council please approve the appointments of Nathan Slower to the International Relations Commission for a partial term. Said partial term expiring June 30, 2027. Mr. Slower will replace Commissioner Rebecca Schankweiler-Brown. Uh, and also the appointment of Nate Johnson to the BPW Water System Advisory Council, the WSAC, for a partial term. Said partial term expiring December 31, 2027. The end date of the term Nate is filling is being shortened from March 11, 2028 to December 31, 2027. This is part of a planned transition to align the WSAC terms with the calendar year. This appointment is to replace Matt Allen, who recently resigned. And I would also ask that you appoint, uh, you approve the appointment of John Van Oefen to the BPW Water System Advisory Council for a partial term. Said partial term expiring June 3- or December 31, 2028. This appointment is to replace Michael Seymour, who opted not to renew his membership that expired on March of 2024. I would also ask that you please approve the reappointments of Gerald Longhorn, Horn Jr., the HOPE rep to the Police Community Relations Commission for his first full term. Said full term expiring on December 31, 2027. Susan Van Wygarden for the Police Community Relations Commission for her sixth full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2027. John Golzousko, I'm going to get this wrong, Gal Azowski to the Police Community Relations Commission for his third full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2027. Juan Rodriguez, as we all know as Johnny Rodriguez, Johnny Rodriguez to the Police Community Relations Commission for his second full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2027. Jenny Wall to the Police Community Relations Commission for her third full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2027. Esther Fafilsky, the sta- our staff member to the Police Community Relations Commission for her fourth full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2027. Carolyn Marquess to the Pu- Public Art Advisory Committee for her sixth full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2025. Lorma Freestone to the Public Art Advisory Commission for, Committee for her third full term. Said full term expiring December 31, 2027. And I would ask that you also please accept the resignations of Rebecca Schankweiler-Brown from the International Relations Commission effective April of 2024. Matt Allen from the BPW Water Systems Advisory Council effective immediately. And Jennifer Jones from the Police Community Relations Commission effective immediately. And I would be asking for a motion in that regard, and please do not ask me to repeat those.
Motion to approve, um, appointments.
Uh, move by Rowan. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And I do have a couple, uh, of announcements. Uh, one, you will be receiving, uh, an email from Mallory uh, that was technically from me about, uh, participation in radio talk shows for 2025 with the schedule and descriptions of the different radio programs. If you've said that you're willing to do that, you will be receiving those from Mallory. Uh, and please make note of those so that you don't make the mistake that I made in double booking yourself for tomorrow. So Gary Stevens, if you're listening, I will not be there tomorrow. And Mr. Van Beek has, uh, politely agreed to accept to cover for me tomorrow. So, uh, at 10:30 tomorrow morning, anybody who's interested and can listen to WHTC tomorrow and hear Mr. Van Beek cover for me on the radio. Uh, and, uh, just also wanted to make a note, it is our last meeting of the year. Uh, lots of holidays between now and the next time that we meet. Uh, I've been working diligently with the Salvation Army this year and the Red Kettle Campaign. Uh, donations are up this year. They've got 800 families and over 2,300 stu- uh, children who are going to be getting gifts on Christmas morning. I was there at the Salvation Army early this morning with a gymnasium absolutely filled with gifts. It was an overwhelming experience to picture all of the kids who are going to be opening presents this year. There are still opportunities all over this community to make the lives of the people who are our friends and neighbors even brighter throughout this holiday season. Uh, we are a community of giving. Share the joy of the holiday season with your friends and neighbors. Have a wonderful, happy Christmas, whatever holiday you celebrate and a wonderful new year. And we'll see you all in January. Uh, next item on the agenda, motions, communications from council members. Mr. Corbin, I believe you have something.
Yes, Your Honor. So it is recommended that the City Council accept the appointment of Rebecca Nabor probate. And- and the reappointments of Lena Dal Rio at Large, and Veronica Salzar, HHS liaison, to the Teen Court Advisory Board, also known as TCA, terms expiring December 17, 2026, and Mark Myers, who's the staff, and Brian White, staff, to the Board of Review, BOR, in terms expiring December 31, 2027. In addition, Council Representative Scott Corbin's term on the West Michigan Airport Authority Board has expired, leaving a vacancy. It is recommended the city council accept the appointment of Devin Shay to fill that vacancy as a regular council member, and Scott Corbin to fill the alternative vacancy left by Devin Shay as the alternative to the West Michigan Airport Authority, WMAA, terms expiring November of 2025.
I would entertain a motion in that regard.
Motion to approve appointments.
Moved by Rowan, is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Yes, Ms. Raymond.
Yeah. I wanted to remind everyone that December 21 is traditionally homeless persons Memorial Day. Community Action House has invited city council members to attend an open house that morning from 10 to 11 at First United Methodist Church, and certainly, any member of the public is welcome to join. They note that for, for the Community Action House Street Outreach Team, they experienced four deaths of homeless persons this year, at least. Those are the ones that they know of, so this is an opportunity for the Community Action House team to remember those folks, and for us to remember others who are, who are living unsheltered in our community. So they'll be candlelighting interfaith prayer in a time to reflect and remember the neighbors, our neighbors who have died, so feel free to drop by from 10 to 11 Saturday, December 21.
Thank you. Any other motions, communications from council members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion from council to enter into closed session to review and discuss a written legal opinion with the city attorney.
So moved.
Moved by Freeman, is there support? Support by Schultheis. Brenda, any discussion?
Will we be coming back to make any decisions?
I do not believe we will be coming back to make any decision. Yep. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schultheis.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. We'd ask the audience, you'll have to clear the, clear the council chambers so that we can enter closed session, and the video stream will be ending at this time. Thank you.